The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have citizens for any time any person with business people like council on schedule on the way they speak to the council, no poll action can be taken at this time. Next up, we have a public hearing. So, we have a public hearing, a schedule of close to 2017-18 budget to run up to citizen comment, county councils may adopt the budget with or without amendment by ordinance on one reading. So, this is a public hearing to give you, you can give comments on the budget. We started the budget a month early. So, we are not going to adopt the budget tonight because the tax law hasn't been finalized. But, the idea was for everybody last month, put all the numbers out, everybody a month will look at the numbers, see if there's anything you want to do, and then we can plug new numbers in, or add numbers, subtract here. And then, we're not voting on anything tonight, we're gonna come back next month when we get the finalized tax numbers, and then we'll do this and racing next month. So, with that, the public hearing is open. If anybody has any questions, queries, inputs on the budget, you are free to speak up. Officer, turn around and make them say something.
Richard said y'all wouldn't bother me if I sat up here.
Word is that? Yeah? Did you raise your hand? Are I good? Okay, then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion to close the public hearing regarding the budget.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, but a second round?
Yeah, I'll sign it.
A second, all's in favor? Okay, in a similar vein, we don't have to have a public hearing on the tax rate until we actually adopt the tax rate. But, there's no reason not to. We're gonna adopt the tax rate, I believe, we do that in September. Again, we have to wait till we get the information from Dent County on the boomback rates, tax rates, bond rates, all that kind of stuff, there are calculations that come from Dent County. So, in the current budget, the number that's plugged in the budget is the same number for year number forty-two that it was for the previous forty-one years, which is the twenty-five cent, the regular city rate, and then the temporary five cents on the bond. That's what's shown in the budget. So, again, the floor is open. If anybody has any questions about, okay, we're not gonna adopt it tonight, but if you want to give us feedback, you have a chance. Does anybody have any comments, queries? Anything at all? Anybody? Anybody? That's fine. Again, we're not gonna adopt anything tonight. Do I have a motion from the left side of the table?
I have a motion to close the public hearing in effect.
I have a motion to close it, a second, all's in favor? Okay, very good, thank you. Alright, next up, we are, so what we're gonna do is we're going to move Officer Oliveris up. He said he wanted to go last after the budget, but I can't do that to a police officer. I can't, I can't make him do that. So, we're gonna move you up to the front there, because I want you to be able to get out there and stop crying. And you can't do that when you're sitting in here.
You know what? Yes, and I'll go home after this. I might find something on the way there.
Oh, there you go, there you go. So, uh, do you need the podium? You're up, you're up.
Do you have a podium? Because I look very official in front of the podium.
No, you're here, it's in the wrong place.
First of all, Richard, you were wrong, man. They called, I took it, they were. Hey, I was asked to come here and talk to y'all about a little bit of crime prevention. I hear that y'all been having some burglary motor vehicles, PMVs, is that correct?
A couple.
Alright, a couple, and I think that, and here's the thing, I did read some of the reports of officers did when they came over to do that. And there's a couple of the things too that we might need to talk about later on. So, if you do want to open up for something else, you know, feel free to ask some questions, is that okay with y'all?
Sure.
Very good, alright. Because I think I might have some answers. Now, I'm gonna tell you this upfront, alright? I just started with the county. I am very new, so do not be so perturbed, okay? I will cry, and it's not gonna be pretty. Now, actually, I lived in the University of Texas for twenty-seven years, just retired there December, and I was hoping to take the year off. Ah, there's a lieutenant in the county that called, he says, "I need some help." So, he was desperate for someone to communicate relations. And that's kind of my wheelhouse back then. It was more canine for the last nine years, going out there and, you know, biting the bad guys, catching the bad guys. That was all fun. Because you know what? I didn't have to be in that dangerous shape, my dog did. Because I was sitting there for the bike, you know? A good team, I ended up having to come down to steal, you know? My dog was excellent, alright? Now, the burglary motor vehicles, you know what, I was just, when I was here, I've noticed that, I actually drove around the community, I don't know if you saw me, I was up there kind of waving and, you know, trying to, I was like, "Why didn't I bring my fisher? This is beautiful out here, it's perfect," right? But I didn't, so I wanted to borrow some, but nobody would let me anyway. But I saw a couple of things, golf carts for the kids, you know what? I kind of liked that. And I'll tell you why. My thirteen, I just moved to Savannah, my thirteen-year-old, he goes, "Dad," he knows everybody has a golf cart, he says, "Us. We need one." So, I said, "Alright, yeah," so we went and we got one, and we pimped it out for him, and he drives it everywhere, and he knows all the officers that work in that area. I mean, "Dad, she's so cool," you know, he starts talking about everything. Now, the one thing that I like about that is his eyes are out there at work, alright? He's watching everything. But at the same time, you know what? Kids will be kids, okay? So, with that being said, you know what, this might be something that you can use to your favor, alright? Like, my kid knows a lot of the other kids that are driving around with golf carts, right? It's almost like they're starting to form a little partnership together, you know? So now they're driving around, and they're telling me, "Hey Dad, there's a couple of bikes over there that aren't secure. They're just laying on the ground." And you know what, Savannah, that community is very laid back. You know, it's built like old school, where there used to be porches in the front, and everybody just made eye contact and talked and waved and drank their coffee and all that stuff. But the thing is, we still have to be secure out there. We have to be very vigilant, alright? So, I did get some flyers, we might need a few more copies of it, some death preventions, so I'm gonna go through this kind of quickly, but at the same time, you know what, you're gonna have it later on, okay? The first thing you have to do is that vehicle needs to be secured. I see that y'all have garages here, if you can put your vehicle in a garage, please do so, alright? Because then, it's already secured with the door on down, alright? But if you can't, there's a few things that you really do. First of all, do you like what I say, just do a walk around, alright? Look at the car and act like you might be the thief, alright? You have to almost think like that. So you walk around and you're like, alright, does this car look like something that somebody might want? The first thing they're looking for is what?
Radio.
Radio, okay. That's close right there. Okay, he's good. They gotta watch you, man, Richard. Now, you know what, those open doors, the locks and stuff like that, the windows down, they're looking for that, alright? Because it's quick, okay? It doesn't take a second to get in the vehicle and start just taking everything out of it, alright? Now, Richard, you're right, those radios, those fancy ones, you know what, they know how to take them off quickly, okay? You're gonna see rip wires and stuff out of them, they're gonna go for your SUV pickups. Anybody know why? It's not a car, so it doesn't have a trunk. So, you know how we hide stuff in the trunk? It makes it hard for them to get in. Well, if it's an SUV or a pickup, you know what? Just go in through that window and get in quickly, get out quickly, alright? Now, I have a lot of experience working with these, because the university, you know, what, it houses, you know, God, we have over thirty-something thousand, and we have about seven thousand residents there, so they bring their vehicles. So, the bad guys, they know that we have all kinds of property, so they're looking for that. So, we're looking for them, looking for that, alright? So, we know exactly what to look for out there. Some of the suspicious people that we're looking for are the ones that are out there walking. It doesn't really look like this, because when we walk, you know, we have a face, alright? Let's see, we'll go from point A to point B without even thinking about it, alright? The bad guy goes from point A to point B, looking at C, D, E, and all the way on the other side, because they're like, they're making sure that nobody's watching, so they keep looking back, and, "They're watching me." And then they go to that vehicle, alright? So, those are the people who are watching. And we've noticed that the ones that they hit is usually because something's inside that vehicle that they want. They see a purse, they see, okay, guns, we had some guns, so, okay. How do you identify a vehicle that might have a gun?
In, NRA check.
Right? So, are those tags really, you know, it's one of those things that, it's okay to have those tags there, alright? But understand this, don't leave your weapons inside the vehicle, alright? Take them with you. Even, like, we've learned, you know, by us law enforcement getting ill, because they know where we live. They see us coming in uniform, they see us driving the squads around, so they know where our houses and our vehicles are at, alright? Now, I was never one that was worried about that, because I had a dog. And my dog pretty much protected the house and the vehicles outside, okay? But it's, you know, it's one of those things that if you put those markings out there, expect there's something that might happen, okay? Usually you're thinking, you know what, they see my little badge out there or something, that they understand that, you know, who I am, that I got messed with, not necessarily the truth out there. Because these guys are out there looking for their next fix in drugs, stuff like that, they're gonna do this stuff. I notice that there's destruction going on, alright? So, all of a sudden, you have other people in your city, in your town, right? So now, you know, you have to worry about those people as well. Usually, they're in there providing service and they're out. The ones that stay later, those are the ones that you might have to focus on. Just keep watching and keep looking. Because one of the things too is, how many nosy neighbors do we have in here? Come on, guys, raise your hands. How about, right? And you know what, it's good, it's excellent, right? Because everybody wants to know the neighbor, because they see a lot, right? They see tons of things, okay? I think I might go in a different direction there. But anyway, make sure to hide those valuables in the vehicle, you don't want them to peek in there. Make sure the doors are locked if you can. I see the community has, it's pretty well spread, where there's not too many places for somebody to hide, okay? And the way that this is designed, it almost tells me that it was probably someone, you know, these burglaries might be someone in this area, alright? I'm not gonna say kids, because you know what, it could be just a guy that understands the neighborhood, understands schedules that y'all have, and might go in and say, "This is the perfect time to get this car." Could be anybody, alright? So, I'm not even gonna say, "Hey, it was kids, I know it's kids," because I don't know. You don't know either, alright? So, just be very vigilant out there. Trust your instinct, okay? If you see a couple of guys that look kind of shady, guess what? "Oh, it's gonna be shady," alright? So, I'm not saying, "Sir, what are you doing over here around my vehicle? Are you trying to take my stuff? I know you are," that's not what I want. Because you know what, you could get in trouble, you could get hurt. If they are the bad guys, you're gonna get hurt doing that, alright? So, basically, be a good witness for us, alright? You see something shady, you know what, if you fix it parked there, go park there, park somewhere else, call police, say, "Hey, I'm seeing these guys a lot by the vehicle, I've never seen before. They're strangers, suspicious people." We go out on suspicious people all the time. And guess what? A lot of the times, we check out with them, and they've got something, they have warrants, they got something on them, alright? So, let's go with that as well. Just make sure you're giving solid information that you can. And, you know, if you can follow from afar, it'd be perfect. If you can keep them inside from afar, again, that helps us out. If you just tell them a line with 911, they'll give us information, we'll get out there, okay? Well, let's make burglaries difficult, okay? Once again, lock your door, blow up the windows, alright? I know it's hot, and you're like, "Ah, I need to crack that wood a little bit," you know what? That's fine, but understand that if you crack it this much, guess what goes in there? Yeah, cool energy, guys, they can still pull them, you know? So, you know, we're trying to make these vehicles a little bit harder to get in. And it's getting to where you can't slum them that much anymore, because they're just built differently. The little mechanisms don't break off pretty quickly, so they're changing things, but at the same time, you know what, it's up to us to help them out as well, okay? Secure belongings. Here's another thing, in your cars, get me a fancy place to go shopping these days in the malls. Is it Roadie Drive or what? Or Dale Drive, what is, what is some of the fancy, uh?
Northwood.
Northwood, okay, I go Northwood, yeah, it's kind of up there, right? Well, guess what, let's say you have an empty bag that's Northwood, okay? You know it's empty, they don't know it's empty. So, do we want to leave that bag in that vehicle? Probably not, because if somebody's looking for property, they're gonna probably hit a windshield or a window and get in there pretty quick, alright? Because it takes nothing for these windows. I remember one of, when I was a, well, I was in crime prevention. And we had, it was during summer, so I can't remember what I was looking for, but we had about fifteen burglary of motor vehicles within like two weeks. So, my lieutenant listens to me, goes, "Hey, what are you doing?" I was like, "What are you doing up there? Aren't you crime prevention?" I was like, "Yeah, I prevent crime, I was about to crime." He goes, "Well, can you help me out?" I was like, "Would you want me to go see if I can catch the guys?" He goes, "Yeah," I was like, "Alright," that's all you had to say, you know, but I'm proper, but you understand that part. I'm in an office most of the time. So, I go into cover, and I'm in an unmarked unit, and I'm looking around. I got lucky that night, you know? I'm looking, I see like five kids, three case and two looking hard in the car, and then two with backpacks, and had sharp corners at the end, stereos and stuff in there, so I already said, "Now, these are my guys." So, now I gotta watch them a little longer. So, I'm watching, getting more details out the guys. They go and one spots me, so I go ahead and decide to make a block and come around, I lose sight of them. So, I go two blocks, and then there's this guy running after these kids that I was following. So, I go up next to him, he looks in, and he sees my portable and my gun there, right, and he goes, "Hey, police?" I was like, "Yeah, I am," and he goes, "Let's go get those guys, they were just in my apartment." I said, "No, sir," I said, "You stay there?" I said, "I will follow them." So then I followed them another four blocks, and you know what, they were like in and out of vehicles, never smashed one in, right? But then they got to this heavy equipment that we had in the corner, and they started getting in there, started messing around. So, I said, "Alright, that's enough for me." So, I went ahead and called my buddies, you know, other police officers. So, all of a sudden, there's four of us that just hit them real quick. So, they get there, and they couldn't run, because officers were on all sides, so they all dropped real quick. These are, "You come in?" She's like, "Oh, police." So, anyway, so my feet's getting there, and then all of a sudden, we pulled out four stereos, narcotics, weapons, just in that, that group right there. By the time that we were handling them, we got two calls about cars that just got hit. So, we were talking within like twenty, thirty minutes. So, that's where, you know what, I was lucky that within like forty-five minutes, I caught the guys, called my lieutenant, I said, "Hey, when I catch the guys, can I go home?" He goes, "Yeah," I said, "Okay, I'm going home now." And he's like, "What you talking about?" I said, "Yeah, we just got them," you know? And he's like, "Cool." And I was, I told him, I was like, "I was lucky," alright? It was one of those things, it was the perfect time, but still, I knew what I was looking for. So, you know what, it could be anything, anytime, in summertime, you know, you almost start thinking it's a kid, because they have one time, right? So, here's what I was talking about, as far as, you know, now you know that there's all kinds of kids out there with golf carts, alright? How many of your sons or daughters own the golf cart? I saw two guys driving a golf cart right there, right? Did y'all take anything? No, I'm just messing. But anyway, you know what, now I'm creating a little group, alright? If you, if you harness that, you know, start talking with the kids, create a little club with the kids, a golf cart club, whatever, okay? And then have them be your watch, because now, instead of saying, "Hey, guys, you know, we're gonna be watching you, watching them," alright? So, it's just something like that. On security systems, if you can't afford a security system, you know what? Here's one of the things that I used to tell a long time ago, and it's still holds true, alright? Get a little fake, bleak light and put it in there, alright? Because they don't know. I mean, they don't know until they open that door and the alarm is off, and they're not gonna do that if they think there's an alarm already in there. But if you have an alarm, activate that thing, okay? Because once that door opens, you know what, here's the thing, attention focuses on that vehicle. So, everybody that's in the area is gonna look out those windows, alright? These guys are gonna be scared and they're gonna run, alright? So, that's another thing you do. Yeah, avoid using the glove box, some other areas, because everybody knows what type of area you have. So, when they break in the car, they're gonna go to the glove boxes first, and then go under the driver's seat, and then probably there's always a hidden compartment somewhere on the dash and in all these things, alright? So, try just, if you can, keep the stuff in your, in your house. Once you get out, get all the valuables out of there, you know, once you finish all that, then do that little walk around again, to make sure that nothing's, you know, would attract someone, because that is, that, that's opportunity out there, and that attracts animal behavior. And, you know what, wow, I'm finished with it. And the last thing is, remember the burglary of a motor vehicle is a crime of opportunity, like I said. And let's work together to take that opportunity away from the burglars. We take it away from the guys, they're not gonna be able to out there, okay? Any questions on any of that? Oh, wow, yes, right there.
I think burglary happens mostly at night, during the day, on the weekends.
Okay, that's just it, I'm not too, you know, I guess your community, I was looking at some reports, they happen around anywhere between the nine and twelve o'clock, two o'clock hours. Usually, prime time at our university in the city is from two to like four. So, you know, we do our business, you know, looking for DWM stuff right before that. The two o'clock hour, we try to focus back into the university, because that's when they come out. Why? I'm not sure. They just like to report, I don't know. I think, I think, they think we're out there drinking coffee or something by that time. We're still out looking for them. So, around here, I can't really tell you what time, but prime time anywhere would be as soon as it gets dark around the twelve o'clock time, until like maybe three. Yes, sir?
Yes, you're on the subject of golf carts. I have come very close to running over one, along with my neighbor. You know, I have a neighbor come around the corner, and no lights on, eleven o'clock at night. And he come real close to hitting me, and I had one pull out in front of me. I was doing about fifteen miles an hour, and they pulled right in front of me. Never even saw me, so I slowed down to five miles an hour, and I'm following them, then I decided to try to go around them. Hey, look, come around in front of me. And they're riding around with no lights on, late at night.
How many, how many people in this community, I'm sorry, how many, I'll answer. A lot? Is it, like, are we talking over two thousand, three thousand?
I'm ready, Mark.
Four thousand and fifty?
Yes.
Six hundred and fifty.
Six hundred and fifty people. Alright, so we kind of, we might know those in those golf carts, alright? My thing is, you know what, if that ever, if it was my kid, okay, and that happened, I would hope that somebody would come, because they know my kid, they know me, and this is bad, and we have over, gosh, forty-five hundred there. So, you know what, it's a small community, but it's big at the same time. At the same time, we run certain areas, alright? Like, where I live, it's next to the basketball courts we have out there, and the swimming pool. So, everyone in that area knows us, because we come and act golf a lot. So, if he ever does something like that, which, he's a good driver.
I've had some really, really, very, very, very young people operate them, and they know what else on them. Don't get me wrong, I mean, I, you know, I've had three of them myself since I've been out here, so.
Well, that's, that's just it, you know, education's the biggest thing, you know? If y'all could create a flyer or some way to spin it, or send it to some kind of neighborhood watch, what happened, I probably will try to get that out there going again, alright?
It is golf, it's not a city thing, right? Somebody's running, you know, changes for me.
I am, yeah, I'm in my, you know, this is my third attempt doing the neighborhood watch, and it seems like politics always get involved in this, but I'm still here.
Politics can't be part of it.
Pardon?
Politics can't be part of it.
I can't, I'm not a politician at all.
No, she said that it gets involved, but the thing is...
But I am, third time around, I have, there's Facebook site, and I have been posting similar stuff to what you're saying.
Do you have a committee already for it, or are you there?
I have a group, yeah, but...
Alright, I'm gonna leave a card, invite to your group, and then let's see if we get a start, because I think that's a good thing to have.
It's the best thing to have.
That's the way you get the message out.
And we used to be a really close knit community. I always thought, you know, we had just...
What do you mean, "used to be"?
Well, yeah, I think we can get that way again.
You know, I look at the community, it looks awesome. You know, I was looking at Asper Sil over there, not sure I can afford that house anyway. But you know what, one, one back to you, sir, real quick, if you could, if there's a way that you could get back to his parents and tell them that, that would be like crisis probably for that parent too, because they don't want their sons out there driving like that, especially in the dark, so, alright? So, but like I said, those flyers out there, if y'all have a way to communicate with, you know, other neighbors in the area, put a flyer, say, "Hey, let's talk about safety a little bit." There's nothing wrong with putting a safety flyer, saying, "You know what? Protect yourself during the night, make sure the lights are on and stuff, because they can't see you at the same time." Like, you would get that one, you know? Any, any other questions? This is anything and everything, guys?
We'll, we'll have you out there. Again, I'm not, we're both at the corner, for the third time around, I'm wanting to see interest, and we probably do something up here, Linda and Mark, and we'll invite you up here.
Definitely do that. I'd be more than happy to come out. Like I said, I've got tons of information, if I don't, you know what? We've hired a new group of community legislators, we have five now, they had two in the past week.
And they've been great, they, Smiley.
Yes, Charlie?
One.
And that's one of the things, you know, the new sheriff wants to make sure that we get out between here and here. So, anything that y'all have going on, you know what, definitely invite us, and we'll come out and try to help as much as we can. And we have a lot of resources, so.
In the neighborhood watch, as far as authority goes, the best thing, I mean, just nine one a month, right?
Eyes and ears. And you know, one of the things too is that when you have an established one, and you have a schedule, you know what, you can be on those times that you think that there might be some animal behavior out there going around somewhere, and that's where you kind of saturate, and just drive, because they'll see, and they're like, "Oh my God, this neighborhood is not good." Because they got way too many people out there.
I do have one question, well, this one may be tied in to what Dan's gonna talk about later. But several times on the, we have those people on Facebook and neighborhood watch. I've been having everybody to both Facebook and to the neighborhood watch. But this question comes up a lot, was it, "I just heard gun shots," or is it fireworks? And those situations, which, you know, my response is always, "Well, everybody, because Ben and I are going out looking," you know? But if you can find out, you know, where, if it's calling one or one...
There won't be guns anymore, Jake moves.
We want to make sure, yeah, because that's a scary thing. And we're so, it's such a safe community, the key that's safe is where, um, right now, I want to do.
Yeah, and remember, you know what, as far as the fire, if there's an issue with this, call us. I mean, there's, y'all are incorporated, you're sitting, yes? Alright, we still take calls up here, alright? You're with the county still, so we will still send officers up here.
On the Fourth of July, would you?
On the Fourth of July, we'll send on calls, alright? Like, for instance, if someone's being unsafe out there, now understand this, we, I'll try to explain this real quick.
I mean, we can't fire which others, and people that are here, I mean, that's not, for me to go stop them, you know, or for the council to have to go out, that's...
Yeah, understand that, you know what, that's one of the things, like, you can still call us, alright? Now, can we write citations here? We can, but we can't come out and say, "Okay, what's the complaint?" Alright? Billy Bob Joe over there is like throwing out a lot of rockets and stuff like that. We'll go over there, "Hey, Billy Bob, what's going on?" He'll tell us, "Hey, just trying to have some fun, we're Fourth of July, alright? We're the best, Dan, let's do this." That's fine, but we're gonna say, "You know what, be safe about it," alright? I worked, I worked doing these fireworks, did anybody go to that? Y'all look, you was with us yet, but anyway, so I went there, and I was just like eleven, I get home about eleven-thirty in Savannah. I'm starting to fall asleep, and all of a sudden, boom! And I look over, and my windows are lit up, and I was like, I was sleeping, grabbed my gun, I was like, "Wait a minute, what's going on out there?" They were popping fireworks. Now, I couldn't do nothing there, because you know what, Savannah is unincorporated. So, we are just there as far as, we're not a city, alright? We have the water district that we hired as a supplement, but the county still goes over there. It'd be the same thing going down there, we would say the same thing, "Hey, we can't ride a ticket," you know what, blah, blah. Now, if it's a Texas penal code, then we can do something, alright? If it's arson, fire marshal come out here, we'll come out here, alright? Anything other than just, you know, because ordinances, you know, y'all, I'm sure y'all don't have ordinances, alright? You do have ordinances, what enforces your ordinances?
That's gonna be a topic of conversation tonight.
Very good, when you do, you know what, if you want to talk about that, that's fine, we can talk about that too. I can bring somebody that has a little knowledge. Like I said, I'm just learning this stuff. But at the same time, when I worked at the university, we had, we had state law, we had city horses, we had education codes, and we had tons of stuff that we had actually, alright? But anyway, hey, these guys are gonna, you know, when it's time for y'all to talk about it, they're gonna talk about it, and you'll understand it. And if y'all need a little bit more as far as information, let me know, I can type up something and send it back out to y'all, okay? Any other, any other questions? No? Like I said, I'm leaving my car right here, just grab it, I'll leave a few of them, guys. Alright? You betcha.
I can hear it.
So if someone wants to pass these, I just...
We'll be over next time.
Appreciate it, anything, be a focus next.
Um, let me, let me just re, let me reiterate something, uh, tell them, tell them for the question. So I was, we had to share up here a couple days ago for some other legal issue that we're pursuing, and it's not important. But, you know, one of the things that he said was, because I asked him, I said, "What's the deal with the, you know, a couple of rapists?" And he said, "Look, we've got eight hundred roofers running around town. Anybody with a clipboard can walk up your driveway, looking in your car, and go up and knock on your door, ring your doorbell, and see if you're home. And if you answer, you need a roof, oh, no, okay, well, okay, thank you." And then, we've got a lot of people milling about the city, and that's what's going on. And the sheriff told me, not yet the deputy's name, um, he said, "Look, we have an incredibly safe community, we have no aggravated crimes, there's no assaults, there's no... It's, it's a bed and breakfast, you call it a B and B community, and you can have very little crime." He said, "Your crime is so low, you know, that it just, so it's not going nuts up here." It's just, right now, we're the, we have a national, we have a natural disaster. We got a lot of people roaming the neighborhoods now, roofers, painters, fence guys, all sorts, so, you know, that's, you know, front, but we're not, relatively speaking, that's a fine wave, we're just having two events in six months, one more in months, so, but...
And that's true, I mean, like I said, your neighborhood is safe, but at the same time, be very vigilant out there.
Yeah, just be smart, just tend to be smart.
Because you do have those working, and it's kind of all coming up.
And sometimes that sort of works against you, if you come to a place you're not familiar with. Okay, thank you, officer.
Alright, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, guys, good day.
Alright, next up, the consideration of the minutes of the June eighth, two thousand seventeen, everybody have, anybody have any questions on the minutes?
Uh, I did get a question, it was a minor question, it started with...
I motion to approve the minutes. Alright, ten seconds, ten seconds, all is in favor? Okay, thank you. Alright, next up, we have consideration of the creation of a park and a park's advisory board. Okay. What this is, uh, we actually, I looked it up, we talked about this about, uh, I mentioned it, we talked about it about two years ago, then another time about a year ago.